Morning, ladies and gentlemen, council. We're gonna call this meeting to order and I'm gonna ask Councillor Crick to start with a short prayer.
Lord, we thank you for the opportunity we have to be in this great country and to live in the MD of Bonneville, or to pray for wisdom today as we go through this council meeting, make decisions, and pray for your blessing on all the staff and residents that live in the MD of Bonneville. Amen.
Thank you, Councillor Crick. We have agenda in front of us. Any additions to the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of the council. We recommending two additions to the general, to the, to the agenda. Nine point three point four, Emerald Estates Recreational Trail, and twelve point two, intermunicipal collaboration framework update under FOIP twenty-one, under closed section, under closed session, twelve point two.
Thank you. Any other? Seeing none, I need a motion. Thank you, Councillor Crick. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all is in favor. Carrie, thank you. Onto the adoption of the minutes, three one for municipal planning. I need a motion to adopt the minutes. Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councillor Swiger.
Swiger, yeah, that was it.
That council approves adoption of the agenda of the following additions. Oh, sorry, wrong, the wrong one there. The council approves adoption of the minutes of April twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, Municipal Planning Commission as presented. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all is in favor. Carrie, onto three, I need a motion for regular meeting of council, April thirteenth.
Mr. Reeve.
Sorry.
Administration does have one amendment to those minutes.
Thank you.
It was brought to our attention that there's an error on page six addressing the recess that was taken. The minutes indicate that the meeting was reconvened at eleven thirty-five PM when it should've said twelve thirty-five PM.
Okay, should I state, should we state that in the motion, or just?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we approve that.
Okay.
As amended.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Swiger, that council approves adoption of the minutes of April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, regular meeting of council with the following amendments. Page six, the meeting reconvened at eleven thirty-five PM with all present as prior to the recess, replaced eleven thirty-five PM with twelve thirty-five PM. Any other discussion on this? Seeing none, all is in favor. Carrie, thank you. Onto three, three, three.
Mr. Reeve.
Yeah.
Administration also has one amendment to these minutes as well. We also found that Councillor Krivjak is marked present at the time of roll call, which is when the meeting is called to order. He did not join the meeting until nine fifteen, which is indicated in the minutes under item four, two, one, three. So our amendment would just be removing him from the roll call at the beginning of the minutes.
Okay, thank you so much. We need a motion, please. Thank you, Councillor Krivjak. He makes the motion that council approves adoption of the minutes of April twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, committee of the whole meeting with the following amendment. Relocate Councillor Mike Krivjak Ward Three from present to absent in roll call. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all is in favor. Carrie, thank you. I guess our public hearing is until one o'clock. Is there any business arising from the minutes? Okay, seeing none, on to development application number seven point one. And before you start, I just wanna say thank you to Darcy Skarsen for being the chair of that. And I guess I get to take over the helm.
Oh, there you go.
So, good morning.
Good morning, councillors and Reeve. This is application twenty twenty-two dash D dash two, three, seven, for Byron and Chelsea McAdam. The owner is Tiffany Detweiler. The applicant is applying for a dog breeding kennel. The property is located on Range Road four four two A, half a mile south of Highway six fifty-nine. Adjacent properties are a quarter section and remnants. The applicants and mother-in-law operated dog breeding kennel in a twelve by forty-eight building. They have sixteen female dogs and four males. They breed poodles and havenies, which are all under twenty pounds in size. They have approximately ten litters a year, and the dogs are sold mostly by delivery. They will be constructing an eight, five by ten, eight five by ten dog runs with solid roofs off the building, and installing a wood perimeter fence for extra shelter and security. This location conforms to the one thousand foot distance requirements from any dwellings on adjacent lands. The nearest residential parcel and adjacent dwellings are over two thousand four hundred feet away, property line to property line. The dog kennel is currently set up on rented lands and was reported to us by assessment to planning and development, as it did not have the required permits. The current location is not appropriate for this use, as it is too close to the adjacent residences. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out April fifth, two thousand twenty-two, and we received a call requesting more information, but no concerns were registered. Our recommendation for development application twenty twenty-two dash D dash zero three seven is approve their request for a dog breeding kennel as a discretionary use as per part six, section fifty of the general regulations, and part seven, section sixty-nine point two of the land use bylaw with the following conditions. Maximum number of dogs to be kept onsite shall be twenty. In determining the number of dogs, pups less than six months old shall not be included. No building or exterior exercise areas to be used to accommodate the dogs shall be allowed within three oh five meters of any dwelling located on an adjacent lot. All dog facilities shall be visibly screened from existing dwellings on adjacent lots. No dogs, including pups, shall be allowed outside between the hours of ten PM and seven AM daily. This time, during this time period, all dogs shall be kept inside. A boarding youth shall at no time unduly interfere with the characteristics of the neighborhood or the general enjoyment of adjacent sites. All permits issued shall be valid from the date of issuance and shall be subject to cancellation by the development authority for due cause. Shall comply with the Alberta Animal Protection Act and animal protection regulations. Shall comply with Animal Control Bylaw number thirteen seventy-one. Shall comply with the Noise Control Bylaw sixteen fifty-seven, and shall comply with the Nuisance Bylaw nine eight one.
Okay, looking for a motion?
Yeah, I'd be honored to make that motion.
What motion?
Do we approve the, the dog kennel permit?
Councillor, Councillor Crick makes a motion that council approves development application number twenty twenty-two D zero three seven, a dog breeding kennel within southeast of ten sixty-one four, fourth W four M as discretionary use pertains to the part six, section fifty of the general regulations, and part seven, section sixty-nine two of the land use bylaw for Byron and Chelsea McAdam on behalf of Tiffany DeWilder, as per the recommendation presented, and sorry if I got any of those names wrong. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all is in favor. Carrie, thank you. Onto seven point two.
This is development application twenty twenty-two dash D dash zero four one. Applicants and owners are Kaylee and Bradley Bourgeois. The applicant is applying to construct a shop with a secondary suite. The property is located southwest of Range Road six three two and Township Road four to three intersection, south of Country Lane Estates multi-lot subdivision. Adjacent properties are municipal reserve lots and quarter section remnants. The applicant is constructing their home and would like to construct a shop of three thousand two hundred square feet with a secondary suite of one thousand sixty-seven. The suite contained, contains four rooms, which is compliant with part six, section fifty-nine of the land use bylaw for secondary suites. The shop is compliant with setbacks for the agricultural district. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out April fifth, two thousand twenty-two, and we received no concerns. Recommendation for development application twenty twenty-two dash D dash zero four one is approve their request for a shop with a secondary suite as a discretionary use as per part six, section fifty-nine, and part seven, section sixty-nine point two of the land use bylaw. All approved building permits are required as per the Safety Codes Act. Applicable gas, electric, plumbing, and sewer permits are required as per the Safety Codes, Alberta Safety Codes Act. The suite shall be subordinate to the accessory building use when located within an accessory building. The suite shall contain up to four rooms. The suite shall have a minimum floor area of five hundred square feet and a maximum area of one thousand seventy-six. Building waste materials shall be contained onsite in a waste bin or a covered slash enclosed trailer as per section three of the Nuisance Bylaw number nine eight one.
Thank you. Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion. Let me pass this.
Thank you. Councillor Slipcheck makes a motion that council approves development application number twenty twenty-two D of zero four one, a shop with a secondary suite within northeast of nine sixty-three two west of the fourth, reading as discretionary use pursuant to part six, section fifty-nine, and part seven, section sixty-nine point two in the land use bylaw for Kaylee and Bradley Borgette?
Bourgeois.
Okay, bourgeois. At, as per the recommendation presented. Any discussion on this? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, just a question, Mr. Reeve. Is, I guess, two points. First question was, do they actually have a house on the property, or are they just gonna build the shop and the secondary suite?
Through the Reeve, they have applied to build their house as well.
Okay, and then just maybe for everybody's sake, describe a secondary suite and what it can entail. Like, it's not a rental suite, it's?
Through the Reeve, it actually could be a rental suite. We are approving the use and, but not the user. So if they did want to rent it, they would be allowed to do it. If they wanted to put a mother-in-law in there, they would be allowed to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Just the mother-in-law, not a father-in-law?
No.
Okay, any other discussion?
Seeing none, all is in favor. Carrie, thank you. Onto seven point three.
This is development application twenty twenty-two dash D dash zero four three. The applicants and owners are Melissa Williams and Kathleen Bordello. The applicant is applying to construct a yurt as an accessory building with a secondary suite. The property is located on Township Road six four zero, half a mile off of Range Road four three four, one mile southeast of Hilda Lake. Adjacent properties are a residential lot and quarter section remnants. The applicant is constructing their home and would like to construct a yurt approximately nine hundred square feet with a secondary suite of six hundred eighty-three square feet in the basement. The basement will have a washroom, bedroom slash living room, and a kitchenette containing a fridge and sink. The main floor of the lot, yurt, sorry, the main floor of the yurt will be utilized for storage. The suite contains two rooms, which is compliant with part six, section fifty-nine of the land use bylaw for secondary suites. The yurt is compliant with the setbacks for agricultural district. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out April sixth, two thousand twenty-two, and received no concerns. Recommendation for development application twenty twenty-two dash D dash zero four three is approve their request for an accessory building with a secondary suite as a discretionary use as per part six, section fifty-nine, and part seven, section sixty-nine point two of the land use bylaw with the following conditions. An approved building permit is required as per Alberta Safety Codes Act. Applicable electrical, gas, plumbing, and sewer permits are required as per Alberta Safety Codes Act. The suite shall be subordinate to the accessory building use when located within an accessory building. The suite shall contain up to four rooms. The suite shall have a minimum of four, five hundred square feet and a maximum floor area of one thousand seventy-six. Building waste materials shall be contained onsite in a waste bin and/or covered trailer as per section three of the Nuisance Bylaw nine eight one.
Thank you. Yep.
Mr. Reeve, I'll, I'll make the recommendation that we approve the development.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Swiger, for making the motion that council, whoop, that council approves development application number twenty twenty-two D zero four three, a yurt with secondary suite within northwest thirty-three sixty-three and three west fourth reading as discretionary use pursuant to part six, section fifty-nine, and part seven, section sixty-nine point two in the land use bylaw for Melissa Williams and Caitlin Bordello as per the recommendation presented. Any discussion? I just had Deputy Reeve Fidel phone me about this. He, he found nothing wrong with this. He wanted to go ahead, ahead with it. He told me, phoned me yesterday about this. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess, yes.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, just a, I guess, comment. Interesting, because we've been talking about yurts over the last couple of years, and provincial parks been using them as accommodation for, for campers and stuff. So interesting to see how this pans out, and, because we're also thinking about that at the ski hill. So it'd be nice to kinda watch how this one goes.
Okay. Have a great day, ladies. I guess we're going on to, we have no subdivision applications, I don't think. So on to new business, nine point one. Nine point one one. Sorry about that. Good morning. That's okay, we're gonna ask the young lady there to stand up and introduce herself to council. While he's figuring out his computer.
I'm Chelsea, I just started last week as the records manager for the MD. Yeah, so glad to be here.
Well, welcome to our family.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Ready to go.
All right. Big guy, giver.
All right, in twenty eighteen, similarly to other regions in the province, residents of the MD of Bonneville were experiencing break in enters and rural property crime at a high rate. And as, as a means of helping MD residents safeguard their property, council implemented the vacant home check program, which essentially called for MDPs officers to attend empty or vacant homes while the homeowners were away for extended periods on holidays. With the downturn in the local economy and later COVID nineteen in twenty nineteen, the instances where residents traveled became less and less, to the point where incoming vacant home check files have seen drastic and ongoing reductions. Under these circumstances, it may be prudent to review the details of the program and assess whether it should continue to be funded. So I indicated some data here, the number of home checks that we, or excuse me, the number of residences that were under the home check program from January to December for years twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty-one. As you can see, twenty nineteen, we had a hundred and thirty, and twenty twenty, we had a eighty-eight, and then we've continued to drop here, thirty-one, and then five here between January and March of this year. So approximately three hundred and thirty-five hours have been dedicated, when you extrapolate the math, two hundred and sixty-six homes, visiting these homes an average of seven to ten times, depending on how long the people are away from home, approximately two thousand visits, and if you extrapolate, probably ten minutes per visit, you're looking at about three hundred and thirty-five hours that have been dedicated since the program began. Did a review of the Bonneville and Cold Lake detachment crime data. Unfortunately, the online data does not go back as far as twenty nineteen, but we did look in twenty twenty into twenty twenty-one. Really, there's peaks and valleys in both demographics, and we can, if we can have those brought up, if there's any questions, I can try to answer them, although I didn't craft these reports. But it looks to me like for both detachments, there's essentially peaks and valleys with no significant change in, in statistics over that time, as it relates to property crimes. So really, nothing to indicate whether the program has been a success or not, according to the data that we have from the RCMP, so. As I said, the program is here for discussion through council and for some direction as to whether or not the program should continue to be, to be funded and operated by, by the MD Public Safety.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, my, my comments are that it, it shows a presence out, out in the area and, and out in, well, lots of rural areas that probably we would not have constables going in general, because they're, you know, a house at the end of some, you know, some kind of obscure area somewhere, or, or it could just be in a subdivision somewhere. But this, I think, in my opinion, this gets them out, and it gets them about, and they have a, that presence that people see, so I, I still think it's a good thing. If they, if they weren't doing this, I'm not sure, I'm not, I'm sure they have other things to do, but they'd be patrolling, so why not have them patrol areas that they normally wouldn't patrol? So I'm in favor of the program.
I guess we're looking for a motion?
Just another question, I guess, before we do a motion.
Okay.
So last, last year, we had thirty-one calls throughout the year total, or thirty-one visits, is that right?
That's correct, yeah. Thirty-one, thirty-one residences. The number of visits are, depending on how long people are away for.
Yeah.
So if they're away for a week, you might only get two visits or maybe three in there. If they're gone for a three-week period, then you could see up, you know, seven or something along those lines.
So what would be the, the cost of this, like, say, last year's cost of the program to operate it?
So if you look at, what I did was, I mean, if, if we looked at three hundred and thirty-five hours that has been invested or person hours into the program, the average salary of our officer, sixty-five dollars-ish, before we factor in some other variables like radials and equipment and things like that, it came out to about twenty-one thousand eight hundred dollars was the cost for the program since its inception, if we want to attach a dollar value to, to that.
Mr. Reeve?
Yeah.
That's just, that's kind of a, a statistic that's a bit skewed though, isn't it? Because you're, well, it's not skewed, it's just that your guys are being paid hourly anyway.
That's correct.
So it's not, it's not, we're not saving money by canceling the program. You're still paying these guys to drive out there, they just happen to not be stopping at that house.
Okay.
So, I don't know, I, I don't think it's a lose, I don't think we're losing anything.
Yes, Councillor?
Yeah, at first, I, when I was thinking, I was at kind of disagreement, but this is a good thing to offer for our residents, and I think we should just continue, go forward with it as, as is.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion.
Thank you, Councillor Slipcheck, make a motion that council directs administration to continue offering the vacant home clerk program in accordance with the municipal, municipal policy. Yeah, sorry, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Although it is an accurate statement that there wouldn't be money saved, are there, is there anything else council would like our Public Safety Department to do with that three hundred and thirty-five hours? Is there, is there work that is better suited or of more value to the municipality and to the residents than the home check for ten minutes that, at somebody's house has been gone for a while? Particularly when the RCMP stats don't prove one way or the other whether the program has made any difference. I just, so the question really is not whether this is a good or a bad program, it's just it does take three hundred and thirty-five hours. I agree, there is no financial saving, but is there something else council would like the Public Safety Department to do with that three hundred and thirty-five hours? Are there other areas that require more public safety that could be three hundred and thirty-five hours of highway patrol? We, we have multiple accidents on highways, we have multiple public safety incidents on highways. Is there other work that you'd like for that three hundred and thirty-five hours? That's really the question.
Go ahead.
I guess I'd only ask, how many hours is the School of Resources officers devoting to that? I mean, if we're talking value of what the, of this department does, I mean, the home checks is probably not the first place I would look.
So I'm, I'm sorry, through the Reeve, to Councillor Skarsen, the question was, how many hours are?
The School of Resources officers devoting, right, if we're talking about?
To the vacant home check program?
No, to what they're doing, right?
Okay, well.
Well, I just, the CEO brought the question up of, what, what could we do with those three hundred and thirty-five hours? Well, if I'm looking at what the Public Safety guys can be doing of value, that's, the home checks is probably not the first place I'd be looking to fetch, right? So.
Mr. Reeve, so my, my only comment would be, I still like the program and the hours. I would just say if we could do those hours when the, when the bad guys are out, which is, you don't know that, but if we could do it at three in the morning, but we, I don't think we do. We're, we're doing it between eight and seven, or whatever it is, I'm not sure. You can tell folks what your hours are again, but maybe do that.
Right, so we, we, we don't typically run, but we have been running some overnight shifts. So we've been doing that on account of the fact that we've been having some issues with greater shop B and Es and things of that nature, as well, the mailboxes have been continuing to get hit. So we have been doing some, some observation and report shifts overnight, but the standard shift does end at one o'clock, two o'clock in the summer months, like in the months of July and August is what we did last year.
Yeah, okay, no, just glad to hear that you're actually doing some night, nighttime stuff now, then. And of course, we don't want to announce that, because then the bad guys will start doing it during the day, when they know you're out at night, so, anyway, appreciate it.
Well, with your wisdom, do you think we should continue with this program or not? Like, is there, like, I, I'm reading the, the stats here, and they don't, it doesn't really change much, like, it doesn't, there's no real benefit to the stats.
I think it's, I think it's a difficult conversation to have at this point, simply because the reality of, of what we're gonna be into in the next year versus where we've been the year prior are gonna be totally different. With COVID, there was very little travel, there's very little demand for the program. The demand really petered off, and the program was sort of floundering, not a whole lot going on with it. Could that change in the future? Potentially, it could, but I guess, I guess my, my request would be to find out what council wants to do now, because if it's a program that maybe works again in two years, we can always revitalize it. If there's something else that council would want us doing at that time. I do, we do have a level of service review coming up in the, in the next few months, and I'm sure that, that there's gonna be a lot of topics discussed about what council wants Public Safety to be doing. We'll be looking for input then as well, so.
Can we leave this till then? Till we have a little more?
Yeah, you can. I'll, I'll move that we table it until that, till when we're discussing the, what you're talking about there.
We already have a motion on the floor, though. We already have a motion on the floor.
We can move to table it still, can't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we have the motion already, so you're gonna, okay. We can just table that?
No, you can table it. And there's, I guess there's no discussion, all in favor? Carrie.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
If we could just get clarification as to when you would like it tableed?
Uh, so whenever he was just talking.
Yeah, to the Public Safety Services, Level Service.
Yeah, I believe it's already scheduled, but.
Okay, thank you. Onto nine one two. Thanks. Yeah. Morning, welcome back.
Morning, council. So today, I'm bringing forward sponsorship requests for the twenty twenty-two Bonneville District four H show and sale. So the Bonneville District Council will be hosting their annual district show and sale on, in May, at May twenty-eighth, I believe, in Cold Lake. They're requesting financial support from the MD Bonneville for this event. So this is a Bonneville four H District Council first show and sale since twenty nineteen. It'll be held May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, at the Cold Lake Exhibition Park, with the supper being provided by the Cold Lake Egg Society for eighteen dollars a plate. Traditionally, the MD Bonneville has supported this event by sponsoring the supper, and historically at a cost of two thousand dollars. In twenty twenty-one, the event was held virtually, and instead of sponsoring a supper, the MD provided financial support to help cover the cost of additional technology required to provide videos and pictures through the virtual platform. The funding was in the amount of five hundred dollars per club, with three clubs within the district, and also the Goodridge Forge Club at a value of two thousand dollars. With this year's event going to be back in person, the Bonneville Forge District Council is once again requesting the MD's support through sponsorship of the supper, which they anticipate will cost approximately forty-five hundred dollars. This request was reviewed by the Agricultural Service Board at their last meeting and made a recommendation to approve this request. So, any questions?
Just looking for a motion?
Mr. Reeve, could you just have clarification?
Yep.
On this, where's the event held, gonna be held this year?
This year will be held in This year will be held in Cold Lake at the Cold Lake Eggs, um, Agriplex.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's costing like eighteen dollars per plate for two hundred and fifty people, so that's where the number comes from, so I'll make the motion to support this.
Okay, thank you, uh, Counselor Cravieak. Makes a motion that council approves a contribution of the amount of forty-five hundred dollars to the Bonneville four H District Council to sponsor the supper for the two thousand twenty-two Bonneville four H District Show and Sale Event, as recommended by the Bonneville Agricultural Service Board, A S B, to be funded from the twenty twenty-two A S B budget. Any discussion on this?
Just a question, does the check get cut to the Cold Lake Eggs Society or to the Bonneville Egg?
No, it'll be, uh, to the Bonneville, um, district. They will pay it.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, on to planning and community, uh, nine, two point one.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, the Kier Foundation holds an annual event called the National Denim Day where it partners with organizations who wish for their workplace to participate and raise funds to support breast cancer research. The Kier Foundation encourages organizations to allow employees to participate in National Denim Day and welcomes matching donations from those organizations. The M D of Bonneville staff wish to participate, wishing to participate, purchase a pink ribbon for five dollars or more and wears denim with the pink ribbon on Tuesday, May tenth, twenty twenty-two. Since two thousand twelve, council has chosen to match the M D employees' raised contributions, which on average has been approximately four hundred and fifty dollars. Um, this year, with the amendment to the donations policy number two A zero zero three, uh, the C E A does have the authority to approve donations up to two thousand, um, which would, um, fall under, uh, this as well. So, um, our recommended action is that council endorses participation by the Municipal District of Bonneville in the Kier Foundation National Denim Day Breast Cancer Fundraising Event to be held on Tuesday, May tenth, twenty twenty-two.
Awesome, thank you. Looking for a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Sutrick makes the motion that council endorses participation of the Municipal District of Bonneville for the Kier Foundation National Denim Day Breast Cancer Fundraising Event to be held on Tuesday, May tenth, two thousand twenty-two. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Nine, two point two.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of the council. Uh, uh, Ms. Kimbrough sends her regrets. She's at the Ski West Conference with Director Clausen, so I'll be presenting this on her behalf today. At the April thirteenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting of council administration presented the options available to council regarding a support request submission by the Clayton Bellamy Foundation for the Arts, requesting one hundred and seventy-eight thousand in funding as well as a letter of support for the establishment and operation of a new performing arts theater in the town of Bonneville. Council consequently directed administration to bring back clarification regarding how the foundation determined the various municipal funding request figures they presented. Uh, we have an attached email from, uh, the Clayton Bellamy Foundation with clarification on that, and I'll read that in a moment. Uh, the, uh, only change that the administration is recommending is there had been some discussion regarding the support letter, so you can see our recommended action, that council directs administration to advise the Clayton Bellamy Foundation for the Arts to apply for funding support through the municipal community to grant action program in, in the twenty twenty-three budget for the performing arts theater project, and secondly, that council approves a letter of support in principle for the value of a performing arts theater initiative that would service the residents and visitors of the Municipal District, uh, of Bonneville region. And you can see the three options that, uh, administration has provided for council. Uh, option one, the administrative recommended action. Option two is to change the amount, and option three, um, uh, is, is to bring it, the request to Clayton Bellamy Foundation for the Arts Theater. I should add that there is a fourth option that we didn't in, that we didn't include, but council always has the option of just denying the request as well. So the clarification on the question, uh, so there were three questions, uh, um, there are four, uh, four major questions and then a fifth, just in terms of timelines. So the first question, what is the status of other requests you've made to the city Cold Lake and the town of Bonneville? Um, their answers to town of Bonneville are in support of our request of a hundred thousand. Um, uh, we understand that to, to today, uh, we, I received an email last week, the town of Bonneville did not include the hundred thousand in their twenty twenty-two, um, operating or capital budget. Uh, I'm not sure the town's position overall. It could come back to the town for, uh, funding out of contingency or for some other outside of budget funding, but it was not included last week in the town's final budget. Um, they have not yet spoke to the city of Cold Lake, so we're not quite sure what, uh, the city of Cold Lake's position on. The reason behind the hundred and seventy-eight thousand, i- it was, uh, Clayton Bellamy's goal to raise five hundred thousand in cash and in-kind donation so we can apply for the C FIP large stream grant for the matching five hundred thousand and making the one million dollar target, which is completion cost estimated by the architectural firm that was used by Northern Light School Division. The firm is very familiar with the space and as a result, working in the school while completing these renovations and are confident that a million dollars amount to convert the old gymnasium into a theater space is an accurate target. We'll be conducting an R F P to other firms to, to confirm this. The reasoning behind the amount request is that this represents roughly thirty-five percent of our required amount we need to raise. The town represented twenty percent and the city of Cold Lake, ten percent. The, the breakdown was roughly based on percentage of population in the M D versus the town. Breakdown for the city of Cold Lake was lower because of distance to the theater, which decreases the number of the population likely to use our theater on a continual basis. They are planning on submitting their C FIP grant in June. Uh, do they have a contingency plan if the C FIP grant is unsuccessful? Yes, there are other grants that we'll be applying to in conjunction with C FIP grant in the event that they do not receive any or all funding as expected, and they would like to have the project completed by August of twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah, just a question about the funding, I guess two questions actually about the funding. Um, and the letter, that council approves a letter of support. Uh, is that, is that us, if we do that letter of support, are we committing to funding this project?
Uh, through the, uh, the Reeve, to Counselor Crick, uh, I think that's why, uh, um, the general manager changed the recommendation in terms of support letter, that the council approves a letter of support in principle for the value of a performing arts theater initiative that would service the residents. I don't believe that that would, um, that would commit us, uh, to, to any funding whatsoever.
And then another question is, in the cost and source of funding, it says there's a current balance of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand in the grants to individuals and non-government organizations. If I got, if I go down to the nine, three, nine point three on our agenda, it, that's, uh, the Lacripish Healthcare Communities Golf Tournament. And it says there, the current remaining balance of this budget is a hundred thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. Am I looking at the same, same account there, or is that two different ones?
I would have to refer that to, uh, uh, when the original R F D was prepared, that was the amount that was in the current balance.
Okay.
Uh, I, I think it's important to, uh, remind council that the recommendation is to put it off till next year's, um, which would top that back off, and I think, I believe we have that account, uh, for, and, uh, uh, that particular grant program set at two hundred thousand. So there's probably been some, uh, intake into that account since the original R F D came to council, uh, um, several weeks ago. That would be my, that'd be my guess as to why that number's different between the two R F Ds, is that the one is reflecting current today and the one was what it would have been at several weeks ago.
Yes, Counselor, uh, Cravieak?
So the town has no intention of funding this?
Uh, through the Reeve to Counselor Cravieak, Nurse Council, I would hesitate to, um, to say what the town is planning or not planning on doing. I, I don't have that information. All I know is that, uh, at the budget on Tuesday, it was not put into their twenty twenty-two operating or capital budget.
Yes, Counselor Scarsen.
I think at the end of the day, I mean, I, I, I don't, I get a little bit irritated when I hear, is the town doing this or is the city doing that, because we gotta do what's best for our residents. I don't, it doesn't matter what the town and the M D is doing, and I think this is a benefit to all of our, uh, citizens, right? And, uh, I, I like option two. It, um, it says that we can look at funding this next year out of our grant programs pending approval of their C FIP grant. I mean, that, that's kind of the key point there as well. And, um, yeah, this is something tangible that we could actually see and use and look at, right? So I'm, I'm gonna make the motion and we go ahead with option number two.
And Mr. Reeve, I'll just comment also, I, I, we've been waiting for a fine arts theater for some time now and talking about it for several years, and, yeah, I, I'm also in favor of it, as Counselor Scarsen has said, so.
Uh, Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
Uh, with option two, we just need clarification as to the amount to fund you, you guys want to include in that motion and the source of the funding.
Well, the amount's there, and I think that, uh, out of the capital actions grant is the best way to go, right?
That's exactly, that's exactly what the, that account is built for.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
Can I just ask Counselor Scarsen to clarify, uh, why option two rather than one? Is, what was your logic? Because either one, it's the same outcome. I'm just not sure which.
Well, I just, I, I guess it would just, um, when I read that, pending the approval of the C FIP grant is kind of the, the key to me, right? So.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, nothing happens if they can't get the C FIP grant, right? So.
I just think that myself, the funding is just kind of, they put a bunch of numbers together. I really don't think the M D residents are gonna use it more than the town residents, so, you know, why is our funding so much more than the town? I, I don't, that's just my, or they just put a number out there and we're gonna just take that number. Um, I don't think that's right, myself.
Mr. Reeve, can I just say to that, though, we, our population is way, way higher than the town. Um, I mean, I guess that's my comment.
Okay, our, our population also lives a lot further, like, the, the city of Cold Lake, what's their, what's their amount? I don't even, yeah, one second. What was the city of, uh, Cold Lake's amount?
Ten percent.
Ten percent, yeah, so they live, a lot of our residents live as far as the city of Cold Lake, so it's not a fair, go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, and there's residents like.
One second, who is first? Um, I cut somebody off. Did I cut Donnie off? Okay, sorry. Go ahead, Counselor Cravieak.
Yeah, I was gonna say that there's many residents on the west end and the east end that probably would not.
Never, never use it.
Attend this, yeah. So, to have the M D pay for thirty-five percent, I think, should be the town paying that, that much. Thank you.
Yeah, anyone else had a comment on that? Yeah, Counselor Sutrick?
I just want to say from past experience, when now Victor was in, there was a lot of M D people coming from Ardmore, Glendon and Plain. It was very good, and I think this mute, this, we need this at this time with our residents. They enjoy going out, though that place would be packed lots of times. There was a lot, lots of M D residents using it whenever I went.
I don't disagree with you. I'm just looking at the percentages, right?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Oh, I, um, Counselor Slipdruck just echoed what I was gonna say. I mean, if, if you can convince me that people from Glendon and Jagerover, and if they're all Victor, I mean, that's wrong for sure, so.
Yeah, Counselor.
Yeah, my, my, my comment was along the same lines, but I, you know, we've gone to Edmonton for fine arts theater, so, I mean, doesn't, just 'cause it's, you know, fifty, fifty miles away or whatever, doesn't mean they wouldn't go. I, I'm surprised they actually said that the city of Cold Lake wouldn't support it because they live that far away. Well, that's, that's told, that's not right at all. I mean, if there's good theater in town, the people are gonna drive to it.
It's just our, our people are paying the most and they just, they're just telling us, you know, and we're just going with it. I just.
Well, per capita, they're not, though, right?
Okay, all right. Any other discussion on this motion?
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
Uh, since some clarity, if it's option, is this, is this option one or option two?
This is option two.
We don't have a hundred and seventy-eight thousand in that account, so there, I need some clarity as to where the additional funding was going to come from.
Uh, in the capital actions grant account, you don't?
Uh, the, the grant that this is coming from, I believe, is just a little over a hundred thousand today. I think that's, I think that's where that, that, um, it, it wasn't even when we came to council two weeks ago with this, I believe it was around a hundred and twenty-some thousand dollars that was in that account. Uh, so it just, I, it's not a big deal, I just would need a separate motion from council to fund the difference out of probably, um, cash flow reserve, that's all.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
It's an easy fix, though, because twenty twenty-three is when we're gonna give it to them anyway.
Yeah, it's a budget item, then.
So change, no, just change option two to say from the twenty twenty-three Community Action Grant Program. Why not? There's lots of money in twenty twenty-three.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes, go ahead.
Counselor Swager, would you like to propose an amendment to the motion for that change?
Yeah, I will.
And Mr. Reeve, I would point out that this actually says to fund out of the operating budget, so, uh, if you want to fund this completely out of the operating budget, we just need a direction from council as to where in the operating budget we would take that out of cash flow reserve or, or somewhere else, because, uh, right now, that account, the company would be specific that we recommended in option one, uh, would be re, would be refilled in the twenty twenty-three budget. Um, uh, but we would just need some direction as to where we would fund that total amount from, uh, uh, in this budget.
Yes.
Sorry, I was under the impression that this was a twenty twenty-three budget item, so whether it's through the capital action grant or whether it has to be a separate line item for next year's budget is fine, right? So, I never, I guess, even when I was reading it, I just assumed that it wasn't, uh, an item for this year, right? They're asking for it for next, for in twenty twenty-three, so we can budget for this as easy as well. We'll know if they have the C FIP grant by then, right? So.
Yeah, but that's why they went with.
Uh, option two is specific for this year and option one was specific for next year.
One is for that.
Well, I don't see, twen, oh, well, it just doesn't have the date, so then I guess option.
Yeah.
See, with, with, uh, uh, option number one or motion number one, then we have time to put it into our budget, then you'd have it in place, right?
Yeah, but so option, I mean, option number, option number two is still the one I prefer, only because it is pending the C FIP grant. I mean, with the option number one, you're committing this money regardless, right? So, uh, so it could be option number two, uh, worked into twenty twenty-three budget as a line item next year.
So just for some clarification, or council, option number one does not commit council because the grant will come back, the Community Action Grant of a hundred and seventy thousand would come back to council because of the, uh, because of the level of the amount. So council would see this again, uh, they would apply for the grant, and at that time, we would know whether they had received, uh, um, a C FIP funding, and that would make that, but this, this only commits them to recommending that they apply through the grant program, that grant would come back to council because of the amount, uh, the amount is significant. That would then come back to council for final approval in the grant program.
Fine, yeah, I, I'll change it to that then if that's the case, 'cause then, as long as we know whether or not they have the C FIP grant before any money's committed, all right?
All right, so we don't need amendment, we're changing the motion? Correct?
I'll, I'll let Ms. Severin, uh, sorry, how would you like that motion withdrawn?
Uh, so if I understand, Darcy's with, or sorry, Counselor, uh, Scarsen is withdrawing his, is withdrawing his initial motion and making a new one for the recommended actions?
Yes.
Are you wanting to combine those two recommended actions together into one motion?
Yes.
Make more reading for me there.
Just a comment, Mr. Reeve?
Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
To Counselor Scarsen, did you want to add the C FIP, uh, grant application in that motion, uh, number one?
Well, it should be noted that, um, you know, they, that we should only examine this after. I mean, that doesn't have to be in the motion, I don't think, right? Like, we'll know.
No, they know.
By then, right?
Would you need that?
Yeah.
They're applying for the C FIP grant in June. Uh, likely they would know in the fall, and we won't be revisiting this, uh, until after the budget deliberations, uh, when we deal with community action grants afterwards, so council won't see this again until probably late, late fall, early winter, um, and by then they'll have, uh, they will likely have an answer on the C FIP grant. Usually the C FIP grants are usually awarded sometime in September.
Yeah, and I just remind that, I mean, one, anytime you get half a million dollars from the provincial government to, put towards projects, it's, you know, it'd be a shame to kind of throw that money back 'cause we, we're only able to come up with funds, so that's, it's always money you like to be able to, to use, right? So.
Okay, we have a motion that, uh, Counselor Scarsen, thank you, uh, that council directs administration to advise the Clayton Bellamy Foundation for the Arts to apply for funding support through the Municipal Community Action Grant Program in two thousand twenty-three for their performing arts theater program, and furthermore, that council approves a letter of support in principle for the value of the performing arts center or theater initiatives to serve the residents and visitors of the M D of, M D District of Bonneville Region. Any discussion on that? Yes, go ahead, Counselor Crick.
I have a question. Does that commit us to a certain level of funding this motion?
I don't think it does.
That they can apply to the grant and it'll come back to councils to how much we're gonna fund?
We're gonna have to revisit that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, uh.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Reeve and to council. So, what ends up happening is, that's an account, uh, a G L code that we use, um, and particularly for the Community Action Grant, and it's refilled on an annual basis, subject to council, uh, approving the budget, uh, typically to the amount of two hundred thousand. So we've just, all we're recommending here is that they apply for that grant program, and that grant will come back to council for council approval. So we've just, all we're recommending here is that they apply for that grant program and that grant will come back to council for council approval. Council at that time could approve zero or, um, or more than, than the request. So this doesn't, this only is a recommendation. Now, so council motion is a recommendation to Clayton Bellamy Foundation to apply for that funding through our grant program. We're, we're, we're slowly trying to transition, um, all of these things to work their way through a grant program. So we don't get the separate requests for funding through, just, you know, purely from a council. We're trying to build this into a grant program. So this doesn't commit any financial, this only is a recommendation to council to suggest to Clayton Bellamy to apply for the grant funding. And as soon as we get the grant application, uh, that will come to council for final approval. And then at that time, the final numbers will be approved by council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing, oh, go ahead, Counselor Scarson.
Just one last comment. I'm sure by then you'll have plenty of feedback as to whether or not your residents support a fine arts theater or not, so.
For sure. Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Yeah. I think we're gonna take a five-minute break. Okay, welcome back. Um, gotta figure out where I'm at here again. I guess we're at nine two point three, Canusa Ridge?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Um, again, in, uh, Director Clausen's absence, I'll present this. Uh, we've prepared a summary for council on the operational highlights for the M D of Bonneville Canusa Ridge Aerial Adventure Park. The opening schedule for Canusa Ridge, subject to adverse weather, is Thursday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, is the grand opening and ribbon cutting ceremony. That's by invitation. Friday, Saturday, Friday and Saturday, May twenty and twenty-one, twenty-two, is the soft public opening on the May long weekend. And Thursday, June second, twenty twenty-two, is the full public opening. Attached in appendix A are the first, further operational highlights for the aerial adventure parks in our real year, uh, including, um, times, operating guidelines, rates, requirements, rules, and a, and a draft of some frequently, what we think would be frequently asked questions, because so far, there's not too many questions. So we're kind of assuming some frequently asked questions. So the operating hours on May twentieth and twenty-first for the long weekend will be ten to six on Friday and Saturday. And the restaurant will be open eleven to eight on Friday and Saturday. Full open on June second, open through September. Public hours, again, as weather and, and, and other things permit, will be closed Monday, um, uh, to Wednesday, except holidays. The adventure park will be open ten to six Thursday to Sunday. Um, that allows us to accommodate some schools. And the restaurant will be open eleven to nine Thursday to Saturday and ten to six on Sundays, and that will accommodate a brunch option. Uh, climbing times, guests will have two-hour time slots, including fifteen-minute ground school session and a one hour and forty-five minutes of climbing. Guests would be required to arrive twenty to twenty-five minutes early to get their wristbands and use the washroom. Walk-ins may be accommodated as space allows. Uh, the, the, the actual park guidelines of the town and its elements can only accommodate a capacity of thirty-five guests with a minimum of one guide. Six to eight minimum staff at a time, including one to operate the swing and one remaining on the ground. There's a minimum height requirement of four foot, one inch tall and a maximum waist size of fifty-nine inches. The swing, which will open later due to certification and fencing requirements, can be ridden at, at any time during the two-hour slot. And there are harness requirements on the swing and there's some other, uh, rider requirements there as well. The park is designed to allow for and accommodate certain elements as well as resources and equipment on hand to make the aerial park as, as inclusive as possible. Our tower includes a short wheelchair accessible course. And we were requested for those that are unsure to call ahead and see if we can meet the individual needs to create a great experience. Uh, you can, the adventure park climb cards for five climbs and you can see the hundred and forty dollars and then from there. And those are all, uh, in the master rates bylaw that council has recently passed as well. Uh, you can see the, uh, the rules that are indicated in, uh, in the graphic and then some, uh, frequently asked questions. Height, uh, age, weight, how athletic do you have to be, what to wear and what to bring? Do you need your own harness? And you can go through those, uh, through those questions and, and see, we've kind of tried to anticipate what might be the questions. And of course, I believe the department has been working with the other aerial adventure park in the province to find out what typically are the questions they get asked as well.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Hogan. I'm just looking for a motion.
Oh, just had some questions.
Okay, go ahead.
You're maybe not the guy to ask, Mr. C A O, but I'll ask anyway. This, the, the swing, uh, limits a hundred and seventy-five pounds. That probably limits everybody except Josh. Anyway, that's interesting. I don't know if there, we could actually change that regulation at all, but that's not very, the Reeve will never be able to use that swing. Maybe he never wants to.
My seventeen-year-old boy wouldn't be able to use it.
Pardon me?
My seventeen-year-old boy wouldn't be able to use it.
No.
I'll, I'll certainly pass, uh, those comments on to, uh, to staff and to, and to the group, uh, responsible for engineering it. Maybe there is, maybe there's something further we can do, uh, in terms of making that swing, uh, eligible for, uh, for, uh, for.
Two seventy-five.
For two seventy-five? I'm not sure we're gonna be able to engineer a swing that the Reeve is gonna be able to use, but, uh, um, but we'll, I, I, I will certainly look into that as a question. I'll make a note of that and we'll ask that question.
And then the other one with this, it says open later due to certification fencing requirements. Is there any schedule for that swing?
Uh, I believe the swing is planned to be open by mid-June. It's just, uh, some fencing and we don't want to put the fencing in until after the landscaping's completed. There's just a bunch of kind of, it's a bit of a domino effect to getting that, uh, finally done and then the final certification on the swing itself.
Okay, and I had a question about the, uh, this isn't adventure park, but it is opening this summer, um, uh, bike, bike runs for that ski lift. Is there any comments about the ski lift, if you know, to hold, handle bikes? Because I know we're planning to do that.
The new, uh, uh, that won't happen in twenty twenty-two, that will happen in twenty twenty-three. The new chairlift going in, uh, council did agree when we ordered the new chair, uh, to include, I think it was an additional forty thousand dollars in cost was to include, uh, bike hooks on the chairlift, uh, for some. So that won't happen this year. There's, uh, there's just no way to get, uh, unless somebody wants to carry their bike up the hill. And then I think the plan is that for next year, we'll start creating some additional, uh, some additional, um, trails for bikes to come down.
Thank you, yeah, Counselor Scarson, please.
Just looking for a little clarity because it's, so it says one seventy-five per person, but then it says can operate with a minimum and a maximum of two guests of similar weight. So, so two people have to be under three twenty-five then, or?
My understanding is that one seventy-five is the maximum. So if you had two eighty-pound children, two forty-pound children, uh, they, they would be able to be on, uh, on that if they, if the total weight came in under a hundred and seventy-five. I'll confirm those numbers, um, uh, but that, my understanding was that one seventy-five was, was, was the max.
Per person, it says so. All right, yeah, just some clarity, I guess.
Yes. I'll find out some of those answers. I would, seeing as we're speaking about the, uh, aerial adventure park in Canusa, just to give council a quick update as well. Um, we had our first meeting with Alberta, um, Parks and Environment with Mr. Nowicki, uh, the regional director regarding, uh, the lease at the Canusa. The province is actually, um, working very hard to accommodate us. And, uh, we, uh, currently, uh, Mr. Nowicki is working on, uh, an improvement on our rate. Uh, they have tentatively and verbally, we talked about extending the lease to a fifty-year lease. Uh, and, uh, and, uh, they indicated to us that through the conversation at the community home meeting last week in terms of additional lands being acquired, uh, Mr. Nowicki has indicated that with the business plan that was already prepared by the consultant, that additional lands from the province are likely not going to be a, a large issue. It's gonna be a process to follow, but they are very supportive of what we're doing. And, uh, we were, we were very pleased with the meeting that we had with Parks and, uh, um, they, they, they were exceptionally accommodating, uh, to our questions. And I, I think probably in the next three or four months, we'll likely have, uh, we'll likely have, um, a good news story in terms of the new lease at Canusa.
Thank you. Just looking for a motion, uh, gentlemen.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I'll make a motion to accept that for information.
Yep, thank you, uh, Counselor Swager. Uh, makes a motion that council accepts the Canusa Ridge Adventure Park Operational Highlights Report as information. And my wife says she wants me to go lose a few pounds, but I don't think I can get to a buck seventy-five. So, any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Uh, nine three, nine three point one.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. This is regarding the Lacklabisch twenty twenty-two Healthier Communities Golf Tournament. Lacklabisch County has invited the M D of Bonneville to register and support their twenty twenty-two Healthier Communities Golf Tournament. The event is scheduled for Friday, July ninth, twenty twenty-two, at the Lacklabisch Golf and Country Club with proceeds raised going towards the Lacklabisch Regional Health Foundation and Portage College. In twenty twenty-one, council decided against registering a team and attending the event and offered a sponsorship of the event instead in the amount of one, of seven hundred and fifty dollars. The registration costs for the twenty twenty-two event are as follows. Early bird prior to April thirtieth. Foresome is twelve hundred dollars, individuals three hundred dollars, sponsor foursome is a thousand, sponsor individual is two fifty. And after the thirtieth, foursome is fourteen, individuals three fifty, sponsoring foursomes twelve, sponsoring individuals three hundred. A few sponsorship packages also remain available and are shown in appendix B. Registration fees for sponsorship and package fees will be funded from grants to individuals and non-government organizations. And that G L code currently has a balance of one hundred thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. And the administrative recommended act, recommended action is that council approves registering a team for the Lacklabisch County twenty twenty-two Healthier Communities Golf Tournament to be held in July twenty twenty-two. The amount of fourteen hundred to be funded from the twenty twenty-two operating budget. And you can see council's options there. The attachment does have the invitation, uh, to Reeve Kalinsky from, uh, from Mayor Rutov and, uh, and some further details in, in the package as well.
It's a Friday?
Shouldn't it be twelve hundred if it's before April thirtieth? I think the, uh, uh, it certainly could be. I, I think the assumption was with the coming to council on the twenty-seventh. Uh, I think, uh, I think Ms. Keenbow, when she created the request for decision for council, was just, uh, uh, we're not, in the, we're, we're close to the thirtieth. If we get it in right away, it would be twelve hundred dollars, correct?
Mr. Reeve, I just think it's good to show support to the local, you know, communities also. So I made the motion that we, uh, we, uh, approve registering a team.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Swager. The Counselor Swager makes a motion that council approves registering a team for Lacklabisch County's two thousand twenty-two Healthier Communities Golf Tournament to be held on July eighth, two thousand twenty-two, in the amount of up to fourteen hundred to be funded from the two thousand twenty-two operating team budget. Any discussion on this?
Well, I just, I remember last time, I just, I wasn't a big fan. It's, it, um, it's advertised as a healthier future. And I mean, if you, if you knew about the terminal, it's all about, you know, there's a lot of drinking and party holes and everything else. It just seemed kind of like a, uh, conflicting statement. So I, I wasn't interested in it, so that, I'm, I'll be the same. And you look at all the sponsorship closest to the keg sponsors and beverage car sponsors and stuff, and it's like, yeah, I don't know. It doesn't really seem like a healthier futures event to me, so, my opinion, but.
Okay, any other discussion?
Counselor, I'll just make sure that whoever goes, they don't drink and they don't participate in any of that.
Well, it's just, I mean, it just, it sounds goofy to me, right? It's, uh, whatever, yeah. You guys vote what you want.
Uh, any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, uh, all those in favor? Opposed? Carrie? Do you need somebody to, uh, to put their name down right now? No, we'll do it in the future. Okay. Onto nine three point two.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. I'll turn the podium over to, uh, to our communications coordinator who will present the quarterly report.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
You have in front of you the quarterly report for the marketing communications department. Um, I'll just go over it briefly. We produce the resident newsletter, we review, we put out a copy in March and we have another one coming out in May. We also produce a staff newsletter, um, an internal newsletter for staff. Um, in the beginning of the year, we spent a lot of time finding new ways of saying that Canusa Ridge was closed due to cold on social media. We got to do some creative things thanks to C A O. We also started with the soft launch of the new logo design for Canusa Ridge, which will be launched fully at the beginning of May. Um, we'd have three new logos, a primary logo and two secondary logos, which I believe you have all seen. We also went to the Edmonton Boat and Sportsman Show, um, to market our campgrounds and our area as a place to be in the summer with our Take It To The Lake hashtag. We had about fifteen hundred people stop by our booth and pick up a guide, which was, it's pretty good for our first trade show since twenty twenty. Speaking of our summer adventure guide, we had thirteen thousand mailed out locally and we will be sending another five thousand to visitor information centers across the province coming up shortly. Um, with social media, we are staying pretty steady at about forty-two thousand followers on our Facebook page and our Instagram page is growing. Um, with Alexa coming on as our marketing coordinator, she is creating an aesthetic that makes our Instagram page look a little better than what I've been able to do. And so we'll be seeing great things there as well. We did some advertising with Go East of Edmonton in the Alberta Sports Fishing Regulation Magazine, the Four Wing Welcome Book, which goes to all of the new people getting posted in at Four Wing. And then we have our website stats and we actually, our website provider switched from one analytics company to Google Analytics this year. So our analytics, as you can see in the report, are a little bit skewed. We're hoping that that'll smooth out over the next six months or so. And we actually are working with them to get some more stats for the Canusa site because those are currently missing. And one of our big successes in the first part of the year was our Shelter Belt Tree Sale that we worked with Egg Services on. We managed to sell out of trees within two or three days this year. Um, it's completely done online. All of the marketing is done online. And it went really well. People would like to see us sell more trees. And, um, I've also attached, um, as appendix B, a wrap-up of our, um, results of our Take It To The Lakes, um, visit northeastern Alberta campaign that we did with Seekers Media and our partners in Vermillion, Athabasca, uh, and Lacklabisch. And that sees us create two videos that showcase our area. Um, it's the Bonneville Coal Lake region. So there is some video shot in, in Bonneville, the town of Bonneville and the city of Coal Lake, but then it focuses on bringing people to the entire region. And this report just shows you that all of our content was at the top, um, for visitors and engagement on social platforms. And we're doing a really good job there. Um, we like working with seekers. We get some really quality graphics and video from that. And we'll be working with them again this summer. Does anybody have any question?
Yes, Counselor Scarson.
Yeah, so the, the book that you sent out in the summer especially and maybe in the winter, um, so how, how does that work as far as advertising and that goes? Like, do you have a structure or do you actually seek out that advertising, uh, for that book? I mean, there's lots of private businesses, um, information in there, so I'm just curious on how that all works.
Through to Reeve to Counselor Scarson, that book is actually, there is no charge. It is completed completely for free by the M D of Bonneville. We contact all of the operators in our area, get them to update their listing every year and we don't, we don't take in any money for it. It's a free service provided by us.
Yeah, okay. Well, I noticed, I mean, there's lots of businesses in town and stuff, like, yeah, it just seemed odd to me that you're not charging, I guess. I mean, why aren't we?
Originally about, I want to say probably twelve to fourteen years ago, we did. But it takes a lot of time to have those ads made and to track down payments and to charge things. And by doing it this way, um, everybody is included. Nobody's excluded, including maybe small businesses that might not have that money to advertise that time. Um, we think it's a benefit because it's an, it's part of our economic development to bring visitors to the area and help our operators be successful and have a wider audience, so.
So you're saying you take the time to contact every single business to see if they want to put their name in that book?
Like, we go from, we keep track of when new businesses come in that are related to travel and tourism. It's not every single business, obviously. We're not doing oilfield companies in there, for instance. Um, it's all tourism-related and we call them every year when we're starting to put together that guide to make sure that we have their up-to-date information and their rates and if there's anything new that they need to do. And then if we, and we've tracked down new businesses as well to add them.
All right.
Any other questions or comments?
So our recommenda, recommended action is that you accept our report as information.
Very well done.
And Mr. Reeve, if I could just, just add, we're gonna be making some fairly significant changes to the guides for next year. One of the, uh, one of the things I.
changes to the guides for next year. One of the, one of the things I spotted this year with the guides is they, they don't seem to, the headline on the guide, when you just pick up the booklet, is it's not specific to the MD. It looks like it's, you know, Bonneville, Cold Lake, and so we're going to be making some fundamental changes to what the appearance of those are, so we can focus on, that makes it much more MD, Bonneville number eighty-seven. Even our, even our advertising materials and the stands and the, and the large pictorials when they go off to trade show, our, I think over the years, although Bonneville, Cold Lake are part of our region without a doubt, the signage that we're using does not specifically lead people to the MD, it might lead people to Bonneville or to Cold Lake. So we're going to be making some, some changes to those graphics and just to the, to what that looks like.
Oh, thank you. Yes, Counselor.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Sepchak. He makes a motion that council accepts the marketing and communications 2022 first quarterly report as information. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried, thank you, good job.
And Mr. Reeve, can I just ask, though, Counselor Scarsen made a very valid point. I mean, if we're producing a really good product, we have lots of advertisers, like, would they pay a hundred bucks? Would they pay, you know what I'm saying? It's like, I think you're kind of bringing that point up, but didn't, should we, should we, you know, should we maybe ask her, say, oh, just sort of check into, see how much, if it's too much work to do that, well, I don't know. Seems like those folks would love to advertise in our, in our magazines and brochures and stuff.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr..
Through the chair of council, sorry, we can certainly look into it. I, at this point, I don't have enough information to say whether what we do is good or what we do is bad. I think there is probably a hybrid model there where, where maybe other businesses who might not be very specific to tourism, maybe, you know, for maybe, for example, a local restaurant wanted to advertise in our, in our publication, that maybe that should be a paid-for ad. If somebody's trying to get a campground started, maybe that's something that we, so we'll certainly look into what those possibilities are and, and have that chat about what that would look like and, as we move into, you know, the 2023 season next year for sure.
Did you have, you're a good, no? He answered it?
He answered it already. Thanks.
All right, Mr. Hogan, we're going to nine, three point three.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Nine, this particular item is the American Public Works Association Alberta Chapter proclamation request. The American Public Works Association Alberta Chapter submitted a proclamation request to the MD of Bonneville to acknowledge that May fifteenth to the twenty-first of 2022 is National Public Works Week within the municipality. The theme for this year is ready and resilient in recognition that public works professionals are always ready to serve their communities and resilient as ever in their abilities to pick themselves up off the ground after encountering challenges. Our recommended action is that council approves the proclamation of May fifteenth, twenty, to May fifteenth to the twenty-first of 2022 is National Public Works Week with the theme of ready and resilient within the municipal district of Bonneville. I would also just like to add that we have an absolutely spectacular group of men and women in our public works department that do phenomenal work for us, and, you know, I say thank you to General Manager Bespolko for what he's done in that department since he came on some eight months ago, and I couldn't be prouder of the work that the men and women out of the shop do.
So, do we need the, do we need the motion first, or do we need to read the? I think we need the motion first.
Make the motion first, it doesn't really, really need to read the proclamation.
Just looking for a motion.
Okay, sure. I'll move that way.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Crick, for making the motion that council approves a proclamation of May fifteenth to the twenty-first, 2022, as National Public Works Week, and the theme ready and resilient with the municipal district of Bonneville. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried. I guess I'm going to ask council to stand while I read this.
I'm going to go forever. Yes. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainability and resilient communities, to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of municipal district of Bonneville, and whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees of all level of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supplies, water treatment, and solid waste systems, buildings, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens, and whereas in the public interest for citizens, civic leaders, and the children of the municipal district of Bonneville to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing, ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of the public works and public works programs in their respective community, and whereas the year 2022 marks the sixty-second annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Barry Kalinsky Reeve of the Municipal District of Bonneville, do hereby proclaim the week of May fifteenth to the twenty-first, 2022 to be National Public Works Week in the Municipal District of Bonneville. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, and government agencies in the activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the sustainable contributions they make to protecting our nation's health, safety, and quality of life. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, and members of council for that. One thing I would add, and it's kind of connected to this, is that we're having a brief ceremony tomorrow morning at seven thirty in the morning at the shop for National Day of Mourning for injured and, and killed workers in the workplace. Particularly poignant this year is we will be remembering tomorrow morning one of our own, Don Kopang, who passed away in a horrible road accident in July of last year. So we are having ceremony, and I just wanted to make sure that council understood that they are certainly welcome to attend that ceremony with staff and our safety department tomorrow morning at seven thirty at the shop.
Thank you, Al. Thank you, council. Nine point four, nine point four one, ECO Notre Dame High.
Mr. Reeve, actually, there was an addition to the agenda, nine point three point four, Emerald Estate Recreation Trail.
Sorry.
We don't have an RFD on it because it just came up during the day yesterday. In our meeting with the town of Bonneville, it came to our attention, the town of Bonneville is planning on creating this year a walking trail east of the C2 Center along 50th Ave to one block shy of the Petrocanada, or to the Petrocanada Station, which is one block shy of the, of the municipal, our boundary. There had been talk in the past about, and I know Counselor Crick has brought it up on, on at least one or two occasions regarding a trail from Emerald Estates to meet that, and there, we just wondered if they're, given that the town is actually moving ahead with that trail or that sidewalk, should the MD be given some consideration? I don't think we can piggyback onto their tender this year just because of the timing and everything, that tender's going to go out right away, but if council had some interest in that, should we be moving ahead with, with some engineering and to maybe connect to that trail at some point during the construction season of 2023? And with that, I'd turn that over to Counselor Crick, because he would be the, the local expert on that one.
Yeah, I'd just like to see us, have we do the engineering this year on the trail from Emerald Estates coming into town, so that people have access to walk from their subdivision into town? There's about 50 houses out there, and it'd be nice to see that that be able to happen.
Counselor Swiger?
Counselor Crick, can you just let us, tell us a little bit about the trail that the town's proposing? Like, how, just how long is it? Is it like a kilometer or?
I'm not sure of the length, maybe, but it will come from the C2 to the, and they're going to put traffic lights. I think the province is putting traffic lights by the new 711.
No. The province is putting new traffic lights by the Tim Hortons.
Okay.
And the Bonneville's putting the ones by the 711 there. So there will be two new traffic, and were they, was the ones down here going to be putting as well?
Next year.
Yeah, next year?
Yeah, they're on the schedule, and I think the old, the, the.
Neighborhood Inn corner there?
The Neighborhood Inn corner is getting lights next year. So that walking trail, if, if council moved ahead on that, on that sidewalk slash walking trail, that would give access from Emerald Estates all the way out to Vezo Beach. There would be an ability for someone to walk on a paved walking path or on some kind of walking trail. That would, that would give connection right, right straight through. So we certainly would be in favor. I, I think the first thing to do is get the engineering. I don't think the timing would work out this year where we could be doing any construction, but we certainly could have the engineering done in place to go to tender if council approved it in the budget for next year to go to tender on, on finishing that piece. There would be some discussion as to who would be responsible for the block from the Petrocan to our adjacent boundary. I don't think the town has any plans of going past the Petrocan, but, but that is actually, in terms of that particular trail, that's probably the least expensive part. We still have to find a way to get across Barrier Lake, situate a helicopter there, or a bridge, or, or something else, but.
Maybe one of those things that's.
Maybe a zip line, I'm not sure quite yet, but, but we would certainly be in favor of, of moving ahead on the engineering.
Yeah, Counselor Scarsen.
Yeah, so, I mean, the CEO took the words right out of my mouth. It actually connects your right to North Shore Heights and to Bonneville Beach, so, you know, that kilometer trail you would have to build actually turns into about 20 kilometers real quick, right? So, and then I know that if you put it up to our boundary, I'm sure the town would be, you know, almost obligated to, to finish that little patch, kind of like they were at this side, right? Because we put it to their MD boundary and they ended up connecting it as well. So it's in their best interest for sure, so, yeah, full support. Do we need a motion then to do the engineering, or is that?
Yeah, so through the Reeve to Counselor Crick, I would suggest the motion, direct the administration to proceed with engineering on the portion of trail Emerald Estates to, to, I would say, right to the 711, and we can have a discussion as to who will actually pay for that piece of that trail, but a motion to direct administration to complete the engineering on the Emerald Estates trail.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hogan.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
We'll wait for them to write it up, and then we can take a look at it. I'm very thankful that she can type a hundred times faster than I can.
Me too.
And I would add to council, regarding the engineering, this may come back to council with several options as to how to get across. So we may have a conversation at some point about some of the options available to us. Would we build a bridge across Barrier Lake? Would we put a sidewalk closer to the road? There's a, there probably be some design questions that'll come back to council, but we'll, we'll certainly come back to council with those questions and probably some recommendations.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hogan. Okay, thank you, Counselor Crick. He makes a motion that council directs administration to proceed with engineering for a recreation trail from Emerald Estates connecting to the planned trail to be constructed by the town of Bonneville in preparation of a possible construction in 2023. Any discussion on this motion?
Well, I would just, you know, I'd just make sure that the town was aware of this motion if it passes, right, so.
And through the Reeve to Counselor Scarsen, in our meeting yesterday, it was discussed, and we told, we told the mayor and, and the CAO at that meeting that we would certainly be looking at this right away, and that I would be in touch with, with CAO Rogers in terms of what our go-forward would be.
Which meeting was that?
We had the ICF meeting yesterday.
Yeah, we just found out about this yesterday, that they were going to go forward with a trail and the, and the lights. We didn't know that, so that's as soon as we found out about it yesterday.
Oh, well, yeah, I knew about that months ago.
Oh, did you? That they were making a trail?
It was news.
That's the first I heard of it. Any discussion on this motion? I should read more news to our senior.
Yeah.
Community events.
Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried. Now we're going to nine, four one.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. This particular one is on some council invitations, so the council received invitation for the following events. The ECO Notre Dame High School graduation, Saturday, May twenty-eighth, 2022. They have requested the Reeve or someone acting on the Reeve's behalf, excuse me, to attend the school's graduation day from 2:30 PM to 4:30 PM at the Bonneville and District Centennial Center and do a short speech to the graduates. And number two is the Assumption Junior/Senior High School graduation, Saturday, May twenty-eighth, 2022. They have also requested the Reeve or a counselor to attend their graduation ceremony on Saturday, May twenty-eighth, 2022, and provide a short, a short speech to the graduates. We don't have today the time and location, but those details will be to follow.
We have the day.
Yes, we have the day, but not the, not the time and location yet.
Well, I'd love to do them both, but they're probably going to contradict each other, so I'll, I guess I'll take the first one because we have a date, or we have a time. Anybody like to take the second assumption?
I'm sure that the deputy Reeve would be available, it's right in his backyard.
Okay, well, we'll give that to Deputy Reeve Fadiev, and then if he can't make it, then we'll, we'll, we'll reschedule. We'll get somebody else to do it. So that takes care of both of them, correct? We don't need no motions or nothing on that? We do? Okay.
Yeah. I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Counselor Scarsen. He makes a motion that council approve attendance to the events as followed. ECO Notre Dame High School graduation, Saturday, May twenty-eighth, 2022, to be attended by myself, and Assumption Junior High School graduation, Saturday, May twenty-eighth, 2022, to be attended by Deputy Reeve Fadiev. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried, thank you. Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. You can see the list of correspondence that we've received. It gets their seventeen, sixteen pieces of correspondence, the council action report, and just looking for a motion. Unless there's questions about any one of them, just looking for a motion to receive as information.
Any questions on this? Okay, Counselor Kravjak makes the motion, and I'm not going to read that one. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried, thank you. We're going to reports now, or do you have anything else? I guess we're just going to leave it, whoever wants to start, and then I'll finish. So whoever wants to start with these reports, go ahead.
Well, I had a C2 meeting here this week, and, yeah, I guess the biggest takeaway from that is that the, the Agroplex is being demolished as we speak, so that's in the works for the renovations there, and then the score clock is, you know, they're kind of finalizing a bid for that, so that's hopefully being installed this summer as well, as planned. The ice comes out today in the RJ, and the Sonova side is in till the end of June still, so lots of activity there. Other than that, I had a library meeting that I had your regret on because I was at an awards banquet that night, so that's it.
Thank you, Counselor Scarsen.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, so I had a Coal Lake Regional Utilities Service Commission meeting. Wasn't a long one. They talked, we had the Metrics Group accountant, Jeff Alston, do a, go over their finances, and there was a bit of discussion about their moving bed bioreactor sewage treatment facility that would be set up in the next probably year or two. That was about a $15 million project, and so a little bit of discussion about that project. Main sewer line runs through Coal Lake and ends up down at the Beaver River, but they'll, they treat all that, they'll be treating all that sewage through this brand-new, they call it MBBR. Anyway, it's a moving bio bed reactor. And then there was a little bit of discussion about the 24-inch water line and the two different And then there was a little bit of discussion about the twenty-four inch water line and and the two different commissions because the Coal Lake Commission was looking after the construction of the water line. And and now that the line is complete and signed off, then I guess the Bonneville Commission, I think, Mr. Reeve, you sit on that commission. You're you're taking over that. So there's a bit of discussion about that. And the other one was the Beaver River Regional Waste Management Commission. And again, they had financial statements and they had Peter Johnson from Faber L L P presenting the finances. And one of the things that we did at that meeting was the tender closed for the haul contract. It's a three-year haul contract. So it closed that day, bids were accepted and they're going to be reviewed for compliance. And then we'll select the the final hauler for the three-year contract. That was it.
Thank you, Councilor Swiger.
So you had a B R F A meeting on the twenty-first and then chief officers meeting with the all the fire regional fire chiefs on the twenty-fifth. And then an I C F agreement with the town, just a discussion there for when that comes up for renewal yesterday. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilor Crick.
Go ahead.
Okay, I attended an A S H A conference in Calgary on April eleventh, twelfth and thirteenth. It was very informative. The government's looking to increase twenty-five thousand housing units up to a provincewide of eighty-two thousand. And they're funding three point seven billion to expand senior living and healthcare, yes, care, continued care. And another thing was I had a Lara meeting here on Zoom the other day. And they're going to have field days on in Fort Kent on July twenty-first, Lacabish July twenty-seventh, St. Paul August fourth and Smoke Lake on August tenth. And I think it'd be a good thing for us to, well, if we can try and attend, please. And also they got a new forage manager to be hired. So that leave is going to be a huge benefit for the livestock producers in our area. And as well as they did bring up also, they have a two oh, two oh six old one-ton truck that's getting pretty tired. And maybe if we could keep our ears open or see if there's maybe a from our division or maintenance or works where we could maybe assist them and replace that truck somehow at a lower cost and to give them a better unit. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilor Slipchuk.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Had a meeting with our negotiations committee for E M S drafting our response. We're having another meeting tomorrow. I had a Lakeland Lodge meeting. There was an outbreak of COVID. Two is considered an outbreak, but all have now recovered and there's no new cases for the last week. Eighteen vacancies in Bonneville, Coal Lake about sixteen. Also had a B R F A meeting. I'm not sure how much detail you guys want. There's almost nine calls per day. There's a system, it's called the Logos system. It's a software thing. There's deficiencies in that system. And this is used to improve interfacility coordination and performance. So that has to be fixed. Year to date, seventy-eight motor vehicle collisions, twenty-eight structure fires and thirty medical assists. And I did not was not able to attend the chief officers meeting. So that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, you know, Josh touched on that and and also Counselor Kravjak on the B F R A. And then I did attend that chief chief officer meeting as well. We had a big fire in our area that morning and, you know, Good Ridge was there, La Coria and River and the Bonneville. They all worked very well. It was a fire that if it got away, it would have been really devastating. But it was in the old Naps Yard and the creek and the wind helped us out that day. And but I got to see firsthand how everyone's working together and I was pretty impressed. And then we sat with the chiefs. All the chiefs had a lot of good things to say and I was pretty impressed with all the chiefs. And then I was really impressed. One chief kind of put the the main chief on spot. And I was really impressed the way he answered it and calmly and because you're on the spot there and, you know, the guy had a pretty valid point. And I was pretty impressed the way our chief took care of the, you know, he really spoke well. And everybody was very happy with his response. And also there was a talk about a speed zone I'll have to talk to you guys about with the under fire hall. And then I went to F C S S in Coal Lake and there is a they're, you know, saluting the volunteers in the whole area. It was well attended, a lot of people. There's all there's a guest speaker. She was very good. She she praised all the volunteers and I met a I met a girl named Lucy that I was when I was a kid. I used to visit her when I was a little kid and she's a special needs lady. And when I grew up, we used to go to church and she was there. So when my parents visit the family, I hadn't seen her for twenty-five, thirty years. So I got a picture with her and she's from the Gallicson family. It's pretty cool to see her and she didn't remember me at all, but I did remember her. We're exactly the same age almost, so. And then there's a lady from our area. She's in the Coal Lake area now. Her name is Shirley and I have to apologize. Remember Shirley's name? She works with volunteers and she's the big blonde bomber lady. She worked with all the hockey teams and
Hordell?
Hordell, yeah, Shirley Hordell. She got a she got a presentation on behalf of F C S S. And they I'm embarrassed how much I volunteer because when they set her list, it was like a novel and all the things. And I know myself through my own personal experiences with her, all my children, I went through hockey and stuff. She was always there, working all kinds of events for fundraising and with the kids as trainers and stuff. And she's quite an amazing lady. So if you know this, Shirley, please reach out to her and thank her. They thanked her there, but people like that in our area are pretty pretty amazing. So I just thank you, Shirley, for all your amazing things that you do for us. Then we met with the town. We kind of had a meeting with them yesterday and discussed a few things. It was just kind of didn't put no numbers to anything, but we're just kind of through the I C F, I C F meeting. So we discussed a few things and you heard about a few things that we did today. So that's about it for me. Any other comments or questions to each other? We're pretty well done till our delegation after dinner, then I'll correct. Sorry, in camera? Okay, that's correct. Okay, I need a motion to go in camera then? Yes, Councilor Crick makes a motion to go in camera. All those in favor? Carried. Hey, welcome back, ladies and gentlemen. We have a delegation this morning. I'm just going to get to that page. Gail and Dawn? Hi, welcome, come on up.
I just swallowed.
Yeah. I'm exactly like you.
Thanks for the opportunity to present this request to council. My name is Gail Bulbeck and I reside in Emerald Estates, which is a subdivision just east here on Highway six fifty-nine. And as a representative of the Emerald Estates, I'm presenting the request to council to conduct a feasibility study to be done to have Coal Lake water access to our subdivision. All of the houses in our subdivision are currently on wells or have to haul their water for personal use. And about a year ago, while seeing the construction of the Coal Lake Water to Bonneville line, which is adjacent to our subdivision on Highway twenty-eight, I started asking about the possibility about getting Coal Lake water into our subdivision. I started the conversation with our counselor at the time and on his advice, just did a very informal group text through our neighborhood chat to see what the response was within our neighborhood. That response was very positive, so I took the next step of contacting the M D. I was in touch with Barry Bespalko. He's the general manager of infrastructure here with the M D. And that's what's brought me here today. He gave me a list of steps to follow. I have with me a copy of the letter I delivered to all of the residents in our subdivision in December of two thousand twenty-one. I went and did a door-to-door canvassing in our area of both West Emerald Estates and East Emerald Estates. I think you guys have a copy of this letter. I submitted it there a couple of weeks ago. And then also a copy of the spreadsheet that lists all of the lot numbers and whether or not the residents were home and if they were in favor of going ahead with this feasibility study. And as you can see by the spreadsheet, that they were over fifty percent, like a majority of of doing the first step and just having the study and to see whether or not it would even be feasible to have it done. And so you can see that that was in favor. As an additional reference, I couldn't submit this, but this is all their signatures on the letter when I went door-to-door. I also found online a council strategic plan, two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-three. I didn't get this submitted in time for everybody to review, but you guys might have seen it online. And in this subject, in this strategic plan, there was objective number three was the development of long-term plan to offer water to all properties. And one of the recommended action plans of that objective was to engage a consultant to conduct a feasibility study which explores options with cost estimates for providing water to services, water services, which include the following. And number five was exploring options regarding the development of a plan to offer Coal Lake water to subdivisions around Coal Lake, Moose Lake and other areas adjacent to the regional water line. I feel our proximity at Emerald Estates to Highway twenty-eight, which has the water line right there in the Iron Horse, and also our proximity to town makes us fit this criteria. So based on the canvassing I did in our neighborhood, which shows overwhelming support of wanting to do the feasibility study and the strategic plan, I'm requesting the M D council give administration direction on how to proceed with the feasibility study to include preliminary cost estimates, any funding models, any routing and any other additional connection possibilities that might be there. Thank you. Any questions?
Go ahead.
Yeah, just a question. My name's Dana.
Yeah, but Mike told you to throw the mic on.
Just kidding, thanks. Have you considered sewer too? Because to me, it's it's you're going to dig in water line. Sewer line runs parallel to it into your house, so.
Yeah, when I first started this, water was my only question. But actually, Brian Bespalko was the one that actually suggested if you're asking for water, you may as well go for sewer as well. And that's what I said with the additional connection possibilities.
Yeah, and then my comment was also, yeah, you're the new water line did come in to Bonneville, but you're so close to Bonneville Services, not too far south of you, that you, you know, you'd probably just be tied into the Bonneville Services through through municipal lines or whatever.
And that like that was, I said, I'm new at this. I'm just starting the process. So what would be done in terms of actually getting it to our residential subdivision? That would be something that would be done in these studies. So that's just exploring that. But like you said, I can see seven eleven from my backyard. So like we're a throw, you know, a stone's throw away from town. So to me, it would make sense to either tie into town or pull it across from the Iron Horse. I'm not sure which would be the best.
And I'll just comment because I live in Ardmore and I've lived there for since seventy-eight. And when I moved to Ardmore, we had a we had a septic system in a well and 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 two years later, we had we had empty water and sewer. And so it was, you know, it's great because you think about all the costs that these new developers have to put in to put in septic. Well, the homeowners' septic and and water and that sort of thing. You know, if you can get government grants to do the bulk of it and then you pay to put it on your taxes and you put it, you pay monthly or whatever.
Over time.
Over time, it's
Yeah, and that's I was doing a little bit of research there. There's like the land use or like a special levy that you can do that administers to all the landowners. There's probably some government funding either through provincial or municipal. I haven't dug that deep into it here. We're just kind of starting the process to see if we can even get that study done.
Just to see if it can even be done.
See if it can be done. And that's kind of where the residents were at. They're all in favor of getting the study done. And then the cost is going to be the determining factor whether or not they're on board with completing this project or not.
Did you have any, sorry, Councilor Slipchuk, then I'll talk, yeah, go ahead.
Did you receive any feedback from the residents on about the sewer option as well? Were they positive on it?
No, the only other thing they're asking for is tell us fiber optic and I can't control that.
No, okay.
No, we never really thought about the sewer. The septic isn't so much of an issue as the water. Like I know our well, we have a water softener, we have an iron eater, we have reverse osmosis. Everybody in the neighborhood has the same system. The ones that have chosen to not go with their wells, they have cisterns, they're hauling water or having water hauled to them on a regular basis. So this would just eliminate all of that. It would just turn on the tap and have have town water. So that's kind of what our goal was there, but septic would be an amazing addition to that as well.
Okay, thank you. So when you talk to your residents, were they in favor of doing like a tax raise for your?
We had that conversation. A lot of them were in favor of having that local improvement levy, like where you you do it over, you know,
Twenty years or fifteen years?
Twenty, twenty-five years.
And how much did they think that was going to cost?
Some of them were okay with like a ten to fifteen thousand dollar. Some of them were at ten, some of them were at fifteen, some of them were at twenty. So it just all depends on what everybody's
They're willing to pay twenty thousand dollars each household?
They're willing, yeah.
And you know, I don't know how that would be at the time when it all of a sudden come out.
Yeah.
I know I would be.
And that would be amortized over twenty-five years. It's kind of like when they brought the black garbage bins into our neighborhood. We they came, knocked on our door, asked if we were in favor. We said yes, and then they showed up. And we have some neighbors that had nothing wanted nothing to do with them, but they got them and they're getting charged for them regardless because it was overwhelmingly in favor of them. But we really like it. We really enjoy having it. So to me, the cost is is worth it.
So you said like fifty percent of the people or fifty-five percent of the people?
Yeah, over fifty, it was about fifty-five percent. And that was only the ones that were at home. And then there was some that emailed me and texted me later. And I think if I were to go back around today and catch all the people that weren't home, I went out on a gray cup Sunday, so I kind of you know, it depends whose team was winning that day. But no, they everybody was in overwhelming favor, like they're tired of hauling water, tired of having to haul salt for their softeners, tired of not being able to get whites white and just sustaining and everything.
Just to see if it's Because for water and sewer, it's quite would be quite an endeavor. It's
It would be, yes, yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say that it's it's really difficult to sort of talk costs, though, even right now. Because there if, you know, if you get government grants, which hopefully
Yeah.
You know, if you can or if you can't, but if you can, then your price, your costs come down, right?
Yeah, exactly.
And then spread it over like in Ardmore, been paying for forty-two years, right? Every year, but it's not a lot.
And to me, it's it's the benefits outweigh the cost in the long run.
But it has to be feasible.
But it has to be, you know, everybody has to be on board once we actually get a price point. And right now, we're just at the at the study part.
Counselor Crick?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, especially to go ahead with the study, seeing as everybody wants it in there the most for the majority. And we're talking, I don't see anything about sewer in the in the motion that's up on the screen, but I would ask administration to also when bring it bring it back to council, so to a future meeting to bring back, I guess, with with doing the study with sewer as well in there. We may only go with the water instead, not the sewer, but just so we have.
Sorry, Josh, could it be an option like where it could say if it's just water or water and sewer or kind of could be looked at then if it went that far? Like it might be right out of reach to have sewer as well, you know?
There's a little offering plate under there. It's a hundred dollars when your phone goes off.
I thought I shut it off when I walked in. Yeah, but like right now, our right now, our right now, our our main request is the water.
Yeah.
It was the sewer wasn't really, it was only when Brian Bespalko put that in his email back to me that, you know, ask for ask for sewer as well. So I wasn't, that wasn't even in my
Right, okay.
In my request when I first started all of this, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Members of council. We certainly could bring back multiple options to council
Sure.
to look at water, water, sewer, just sewer, just water.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be, we could bring back.
Very good, thank you.
And I'll just I'll decide to comment though, once, you know, if you're digging, you're going to the you're going to the trouble or the M D digging in a water line.
Right.
You know, sewer lines aren't all that much more expensive. So I would, you know, try to persuade people that you're going to go for it.
To go for it, yeah, okay.
Because even the resale and
Yeah, exactly, for everything, yeah.
I got, sorry, go ahead. I'll ask my question after you have another comment.
I just had one question, though. With with this strategic plan that was brought out, has any of this, have any of these action plans been started? Has there been any studies started in any of the other subdivisions nearby?
Not that I know of.
We did water to Cherry Grove.
Cherry Grove, oh, yeah.
Okay, so that would be a springboard. Okay, all right.
Just to our, how many, maybe you guys know this, how many lots are still at that estate for sale?
Uh, there is one house for sale, one, one house for sale right now.
No, but how many lots are left to build homes or?
Uh, one, two, three.
You know, they're pretty good.
Four, five, six.
Okay, so there's still six.
Six that I know of, so.
All right, thank you. All right. Thank you. Any other questions, Jim?
Mr. Reeve, if I could just add, just to, uh, the local improvement tax was mentioned. I just, uh, just for clarity for everybody. And while, uh, while the delegation is here is the Municipal Government Act for a local improvement tax, the, uh, it would require a two-thirds, a petition, um, uh, of, of two-thirds of the people that also represents at least one half of the value of the assessments prepared, uh, for that area. So it's, uh, the bar isn't fifty or fifty-five percent.
Sixty.
The bar is actually sixty-six, um, point six-six percent. Just, um.
So you need sixty-seven percent from.
For the, for the levy, right?
For the, for the local improvement tax.
For the local improvement. Yeah. I was, I was reading up on that. And it only takes one to say no, isn't it? How it goes kinda?
Uh, in this case, uh, many can say no. Uh, but if, for example, let's say there was fifty, fifty homes, uh, you would only need, uh, you'd only need thirty-three, uh, thirty-three to say yes. Thirty-four, actually, I guess, uh, to be perfectly, uh, to, uh, and that, that's enough of a majority to allow, uh, to allow the M D to come in and say, everybody is getting it.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's the, and then of course, there's the other, and I don't think it would be an issue with Emerald Estates. But the other issue is that, that, the, the majority of that, so that thirty-four people must represent at least half the assessed value, which to me would make sense. In this case, there, if there's fifty homes, and I don't know if that's the right number, but let's assume there was fifty, you would assume that twenty-five homes would be about twenty-five percent of the total.
Fifty percent.
Uh, fifty percent of the total of assessed value. So I don't think that bar would be, uh, would be difficult, uh, to reach either.
All right. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Appreciate the time.
Have a great day. Nice meeting.
Turn this off?
Okay, we have, uh.
Yeah, you.
Josh made the motion. Okay. Thank you, Counselor Crick for making that motion. That council accepts the presentation by Gail and Dawn Wolbeck on water and sewer access to Emerald Estates as information. And furthermore, that council directs administration to bring back additional information regarding the request for water and sewer access to a future meeting of council for consideration. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none of those in favor? Carrie, thank you. You're welcome. Have I, just need a mo, go ahead.
Uh, just before, uh, council adjourns, did council, in case there, uh, did, um, did council have any questions of administration regarding what the details of a local improvement tax would entail? Um, or just, just, uh, just bring that when we bring the rest of the report back.
I think that's fine now. Yeah.
I'll just ask them, uh, you know, maybe do a bit of due diligence on digging up what the grants are possible. And I, I guarantee they are, but who knows if you can get them or not. But Water for Life Program and whatever, who knows?
Yeah, I, I, I would suggest that there's very little chance of any grant money for water to a residential subdivision. There, there's not much out there anymore. The Water for Life Program is, uh, those, those programs pretty much, no pun intended, have dried up.
Okay. Although, although they just, you know, they did fund Ardmore and Fort Kent,
Yeah.
And that wasn't that long ago. And we're not done yet. So I'm not sure. I just, I just say at least.
We, we, we'll absolutely look into it for sure.
I need, I guess, a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Counselor Subchik. All in favor? Carrie, that was very good. Thanks.